You can call your meeting to order and I'll drive the technicals. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Public safety meetings regarding a towing ordinance called to order at 5:15 PM on 5/20/20. First off, what I'd like to do is some of the newer council members, what I'd like to do is to reach out to Deputy Chief Noonan and just give us an insight of how the towing works, how to get on the rotation list, anything that you could add regarding being on a tow truck rotation list. So, Keith Noonan, do you mind?
Sure, Captain. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so the tow truck list, I guess a little history on it. From the county taking over dispatch, we used to make the dispatch when we had the dispatch at the police department. Transitioned over to the county when they took over dispatch. So, how it works is there's a list of 15 tow truck operators. When our officer in action, a disabled motor vehicle, if the person that's involved or people involved in the accident don't have a total request of their own or AAA, what we'll do is our officer will call the tow truck off of rotation. Of that list of 15, it kind of goes in order. And the officer will call dispatch says, you know, request a tow operation in that next tow truck on rotation. We'll respond and tow the vehicle to their destination or wherever the owner of the vehicle requests. We'd also use it to for our police vehicles. If we have one of our companies that needs tire change, the tow truck company will tow the vehicle back to change a tire for us.
All right, is that all?
I mean, there's questions about it. There's quite more to it that I'm missing, but...
No, I think you covered it all. There's a few questions that I would like to ask and then I'll open the floor up to my fellow council members if they have any questions. All right, the main reason why this legislation came about was through Corporation Council because I guess the UPD and Corporation Council felt that there was some overcharging going on and then maybe wanted to put a cap on a few items that were, I guess the wording in the legislation wasn't proper, kind of open-ended, so some of the charges were pretty pretty large and some of the insurance companies were contacting the city of Utica and asking why these charges were enormous. So, that's one of the reasons why this was brought to our attention, the council's attention. Hopefully, by avoiding the tow truck members and members of the city of Utica, we can come to a happy meeting here. Let me say a few things. This was brought to our attention, I believe, last council, a year ago or so. And we did allow some charges, correct, on the towing? And what, it's $175? Am I right in saying that?
You're correct, yes.
Okay, so we did allow that. And the fees right now are $50 to get on, to get a permit for the city rotation? Okay, all right. And so now we're trying to accomplish maybe a little bit more in fees and maybe we could work out the list?
You have to confirm that with the clerk, councilman, but I believe that's correct.
So, and if any specialized equipment is needed. I got to ask a question. On the tow truck rotation list, could any more join or do you have the final say, the police department have the final say? And I know some of them do not live in the city or don't have a business in the city, but what is their criteria for that?
Well, the way I understand it, there's 15 slots that are allocated for tow companies. I spoke to the county today. Right now, 13 of those slots are taken, so there is room for two more companies. You know, and I did, I actually had to speak to Councilman Miola today and he brought up a good point. There are, so all the tow companies that are on the list at one point were located in the city of Utica. There are a couple, I'm not sure, maybe more, but that have since relocated outside the city of Utica. So, that would be up to the council to make that decision as to whether or not, you know, they want the company to actually physically be in the city of Utica.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, council members, do you have any questions? We'll go from number one to number nine, I guess.
Okay, I'll wait my turn.
Number one? Maria?
Frankie?
Marie, Maria is not on.
Okay, I can't see everybody.
Can I interrupt you for one second? Is it possible we can get the input from the tow truck companies first and then we can go from there?
That's fine. That's a good suggestion.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much, sir.
Okay, why don't we go, I have the list in front of me. Is anybody here from Aseem? About Bob's collision? F and M collision? Jay's Auto? Johnston's Auto?
Hang on, hang on. Couple Jay's Autos on. Please, anyone who's on the call, if you are muted and you've dialed in with your computer, if you are called, unmute yourself. So...
F and M, I'm here.
Yep, yep.
I'm here too.
Jay's Auto.
Okay, why don't we go with F and M first and any questions or any concerns that you may have?
Well, what you just mentioned about being in the city, I don't know how everybody else feels, but if we had called New Hartford right now, they wouldn't let us on the rotation list because we're not, our business is not in New Hartford. So, as far as protection, protecting our, you know, fellow tow companies within the city, I think we should be in the city. I've been in the city for 50 years. I've been approached many times to move out of this city, my business, but Utica's always been my home as far as business-wise and that's where I stay. That's my opinion. I mean, everybody's got an opinion.
Yeah, understood. Anything else? Okay, moving on. Jay's Auto Service. Do you have the floor?
Yes. I, like, F and M collision, feel the same way. We had outsiders that came into the city that were put on the list. They shouldn't have been put on the list because we had a lieutenant that happened to be one of their friends just put them on without the council's approval. I know when I got put on, I had to have full council approval and then it went to the police department for them to come down to look at my facilities to make sure I had the proper equipment to fulfill my obligations on the tow rotation list. And that was a procedure. It took me six months to get on the rotation. And since then, I noticed that we have, you know, guys that are just put on, they're not in the city. And I want to speak for myself. I'm a taxpayer. I own three buildings and I'm a taxpayer. And feel that the ones that aren't in the city of Utica are not, you know, are reaping off of the benefit of the taxpayer dollars that are coming from Utica. And it's going elsewhere because they're in a different location. But being said that, we're going back. We did come before the council and they did raise the rates to $175. And, but it's just a set rate of $175, but a lot more is involved in the towing industry than just a tow. There's, every scene is different. It's every, every situation is different as Deputy Chief Noonan can attest to. It's not just the normal pick somebody up off the DWI or an arrest and bring them back to our shop. Eighty percent of it is accident or something, a vehicle's gone off the roadway or it's flipped over. And it takes specialty equipment to handle the situation, which I feel every truck on the rotation is capable of doing that that I see on the list. And it's more than, and also it's time spent on the scene. Then how many times have I come back with my $85,000 flatbed and I got motor oil from one end of it to the other and I'm forced to clean that up and spend hours cleaning that off my truck? And I got to be careful of my property because now this oil's going on the ground or going into the sewer and it creates quite a mess, you know. And the fire department is very instrumental in helping us. You know, I mean, they're pretty much, they handle parts of the cleanup for us, but there's been scenes that we've been on that there's glass scattered from one end of the highway to the other and we're sitting there sweeping the whole road up. You know what I mean? To get it cleaned up. So, there's different scenes, different venues, hours of operation. I know I got to pay, my insurance, I'm no friend of an insurance company. People understand us, not their friends. I cannot stand them. I had recently had a fire in my building and Utica National went down to the city of Utica and handed them a million dollars for the Mohawk Valley Health Systems, but here Jay's Auto was out of business for eight months while they lollygagged around. I says, and it was rotten. It's just rotten. So, I'm no friends of any insurance company. So, if they're calling you guys complaining, too bad, pay it, as far as I'm concerned, you know. Because every one of us knows that we get these, we get the normal person off of a tow, okay? Police department arrests somebody, we come tow their vehicle, we get their vehicle back here. Ninety percent out of 100, they don't have the money. Okay, they don't have the money. So, what do we do as towers? I don't want your car. How much do you got? Well, I got 100 bucks. Okay, give me your 100 bucks and go. You know what I'm saying?
Understood.
Take care of it on that on tow. You know what I'm saying?
All right, Jayce, thank you. Thank you. Johnston?
Well, everything's so, everything's fine with me. I don't have many issues outside of cars that are left. When people get arrested and go to prison, then I got to hold the cars forever. Eventually, my storage lot's getting full with cars that people never come to pick up. I just would love to have clarity on what my responsibility is with these vehicles after a certain amount of time.
Okay, I'll make note of that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry? Midland? Precision? Amy?
Yes, thank you. Just a couple of quick things. Can you hear me? That's good. Okay, just a couple of quick things. One being what Craig had just touched on. We tow vehicles multiple times. It's very common that one is impounded or taken to the fire department or police department and so forth. And I've got a vehicle that, I think once, maybe a year and a half ago, I've got vehicles that have been gone for six, eight months to a year and you try to get in touch with people, there's really no answers and not much feedback. And then we get that car back and the insurance company doesn't even want to pay for two toes. And I think that's part of the complaints you guys get. Like, I had a vehicle we towed three times for the fire department and the insurance company was arguing with us that they didn't want to pay for three toes because it was only one toe, they said. And that's three calls. And the first call, I waited three hours between being on scene and then going to the retaining center at the fire department where they have their training over on Leland Ave. Then they didn't have the keys. I waited, you know, another half hour there. It was like a four, four, five-hour tow. And these are the ones that complain. These are the complaints that people get. I just did a tow two weeks ago and I was there for about four and a half hours of two trucks covered in mud a quarter mile off the road. And these are the people that complain. And then, and then we get feedback saying, you know, people are overcharging. I mean, eight out of 10 toes that we do, people come in here, they don't even have 175 bucks and we accept $100, $120, $90. We're not going to sit here and argue with people. So, I think a lot of that isn't taken into consideration when they say, well, people are price gouging. I don't know of any other bills, you know, I don't know other people and what they're doing. I'm just, I just wanted to state what we see and what's happened here at our business.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you. Rockers? I see Billy Rocker. Go ahead.
Yes, the only issue I would have is the cap on, you know, just $175 for a tow and not being able to charge any, you know, recovery fees or anything for that. Like, you know, like we're saying, you know, several trucks or, you know, multiple employees, the recovery vehicle. So, you know, how do you pick a price on that? I understand $175, you know, you basically, you know, that's more than fair. My biggest issue I have, I don't know, you know, I go months of driving. I don't even get paid for a call. Well, you know, with cars, right now I got 35 cars on my property that I didn't get paid for. So, I might go months and months, you know, any money on the call. So, you know, that's not, you got to, you know, consider too, you know, how many calls do we do for free, you know, before we do get paid? I mean, other than that, I mean, I just can't see, you know, inviting a service, you know, 175 flat at an accident scene if a vehicle's flipped over, teetering off a bridge. I don't know, maybe some kind of agreement, maybe put a cap on it or something. You know, other than that, I don't think the other issues.
Okay, thank you. Sartino?
Yes, I have a few concerns.
I read them. You sent an email. I appreciate it. Thank you.
If you're able to bring up that rotation, the guidelines, the ordinance?
Mike?
The first paragraph, as we use in this chapter, record tow truck, okay, the purpose of this chapter is to safeguard and protect the public against fraud and so on and so forth. I think that that is already putting us in a bad way. I think the first thing that, I think that should be reworded to protect all people that have an interest in this. It's not just to protect, you know, the public. As some of the other guys have mentioned, we get, you know, a lot of times that there's vehicles that just left, nobody comes, nobody knows anything. We never hear from them, so naturally our places get full. That was one of the concerns. The other is, first, the first part of any of this, from what I'm gathering, is that there's no, the charging for other items. You can't have $175 for a tow when the car's rolled over on a guardrail on 12 and you need two trucks or you need extra equipment to get this vehicle, you know, recovered. It's just unheard of. A lot of times, we go to a call, on another instance here, we go to a call and we get halfway there and we're canceled before we even arrive. This has happened to all of the tow truck drivers, all the companies. On more than one occasion, I've had circumstances where I've been to a call and got canceled from the same night for three times and been sent back. Now, this could be 1 o'clock in the morning. We have 25 minutes according to the last ordinance to get to the call. If you're out and gone and you're there and, you know, why is this happening? I have brought this to the attention of the deputy chief and on many different occasions. I guess maybe I'm a pain because I'll go right into the police department and say, hey, guys, what's happening with this? And we'll look into it and we'll get something, we'll send an email. But I think we need to go one step further to try to circumvent this from happening. It's happened to all of us, happened to me just the other day. I was called out, went to a call. Halfway there, my wife calls me and says, oh, they just called and canceled you. Don't shoot the messenger. Sorry, on a normal occasion, I would just go right to the police and want to speak to somebody in traffic and say, what happened? Why is this happening? Why is this continuing to happen? I think we, you know, I've been doing this for 29 years. I started in 1991. This has happened time and time again. So, I would believe that the best thing that we can do is actually put some verbiage into the ordinance to protect us from that because obviously it's, you know, our concerns are being, you know, paused on deaf ears and getting any type of, you know, finality to this. It's not happening. So...
No, we appreciate your feedback and that is a good point that you make. Maybe a cancellation fee is needed. We'll see. You know, we'll talk to my fellow council members and see if we can come up with something for you.
I mean, I've got, like, we've got a laundry list of other things that seem to be issues. I mean, I've got a, like, we've got a laundry list of other things that seem to be issues, um, but I know the times, uh.
I appreciate it. Appreciate it. Okay, I know, uh, West End, I don't believe they're on.
Anthony Guillermo.
I already spoke. Okay, council members, any questions you'd like to ask anybody? The chief, Operation Council?
Yeah, I got one. I got a couple.
All right, go ahead there. Mr. Williamson?
All right, uh, the first is, um, who calls the tow trucks? Does this, and the supervisor or the, the individual police officer?
Uh, the individual police officer that's in charge for the tow truck.
Number two, if a car is towed, is impounded, doesn't, uh, the actual tow truck service have like thirty days that can actually auction that prop, or that car off? Or sell it?
If you make that a law.
Oh, so there's not a, really a state law right now if you hold a car for ninety days and they're sitting there and it's not gonna go nowhere? Then basically you're, you gotta keep these cars on there forever?
No, I think it's thirty days.
How many days?
Yeah, I think it's thirty days if it's not unclaimed.
Okay, so now I was talking to some of the tow truck drivers, I think Jay was, that a car, you know, say it's, you know, it's a crime scene, whatever, or whatever the case, someone tries to pick up the car that's not insured, it's not registered, doesn't have plates. Um, guy doesn't even have a driver's license, he wants to drive off the lot and there's nothing in, in place for the tow truck service area, uh, to stop them from taking their vehicle. I mean, they can, but, you know, is there something that we need to put in verbiage on that? And number four, uh, is there, is there people on the rotation now that are not city businesses?
Another question for me?
Well, whoever, I mean, is there actually companies on the city rotation list that are not part of the city?
I believe there is, yes.
And why is that?
Well, my understanding is when they step out of the rotation list, they were, they were in the city, then at some point in time they moved out.
All right, so if they're moved out and they're no longer in the city, then they should not be on the rotation list, correct? I mean, listening to.
You'd have to include the legislation.
Yeah, could, could I add something that, uh, uh, chief, uh, it's Frank from F and M. I think that would probably be unfair since if anybody's on this list that's been there, their business was here at one time, whatever. Uh, I think it should be grandfathered in right now and then just proceed with anybody added to the list in the future. Because they did give a service in the future, I mean, in the past, and probably wouldn't be, you know, I'm not after people that are on the list to knock them off because you're not in the city, that has nothing to do with it. I think it's for future to build our, a strong rotation list for the inner city, you know what I'm saying?
Also, some of the people that do own them outside the city live in the city and they do pay city taxes.
Correct.
I just want to add that.
Exactly.
Anything else? Councilman Williamson?
No, so that, I mean, those are some of the concerns I had and people brought to me.
Save your notes for our meet, our next meeting on this.
Okay.
Frank, I got a couple of questions. Jack?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, um, you had a good point. I, I think it was, uh, Mr. Shortino about, uh, going out on a ride and getting canceled. Uh, well, i- if we did, did a cancel charge on it, who would pay the cancel charge?
It would have to be.
And let's get, and, and, and let's, and let's get to the root of the problem. Why did he get canceled and why, why was there more than one tow truck called? Is that an issue from the people who are doing the dispatching?
No, so councilman, there would be, I mean, there's situations where an officer arrives on scene, uh, there's a disabled motor vehicle, the owner's not present. They'll call for a rotation truck, the owner shows up. You know, at that point in time, you gotta, you gotta tow the vehicle with, with the registered owner standing right there. That's one scenario that I can think of. It would be our officers call for a rotation truck and our officers cancel the truck.
Well, I, I, I would think that once a, uh, I think we should write into the legislation, once a, uh, tow truck has been called off to the rotation, no any, uh, no other tow trucks could come and pick it up. I don't see that being a problem. They could tow it to anywhere they want. They could tow it to the, uh, another, someone else's garage, but this is, this is crazy. These guys get up at three o'clock in the morning and they get, and they get yanked off it. I don't see that any problem. We put that into the legislation. Well, once that person's called, he's responsible for doing the pickup. The second question I got is that, uh, the second question I have is that, uh, a lot of these, you're saying a lot of these, uh, toes, uh, they require extra equipment, they require extra time. Is there a log book where you guys annotate this and you could show where your extra charges are coming from? So in the event that insurance company does call up and, and they call the city or something like that, the city has a log that they could go to so they could be, so they could explain to, uh, the, uh, insurance company. Because without that, I think you guys are shit out of luck because it, there isn't a whole lot that the, that the, uh, the, the city could tell them other than that you picked it up. I think i- i- is there a log like that or, or what are we talking about?
Maybe even a video, Jack, it's a phone video of, of the actual scene, but.
Say again?
Maybe a video of the actual scene, a phone video. They could say, well, the car's down the bank, you know, looking, I gotta put up with it, you know what I mean?
Or, or even a picture, yeah, even a picture, Frank, they could take a, you know, picture phone like you're saying, something like that, I agree. But, you know, we, we have no ammunition to fight for you guys unless you get a little more specific and, and give us some, uh, you know, some detail on the specific accident. Uh, you guys concur on that at all or how would you, how would insurance, I mean, tow guys, how would you want to fix that?
Well, this is Frank from F and M.
Go ahead, Frank.
I've been at this for fifty years. Nineteen seventy-two I started, been on the police rotation, long time. As far as, uh, going back to the calls, when the car was called years ago, it was a discretion of the police officer. Once he made that decision, there was no turning back. I don't care if that person was screaming in his face. They needed determination. I know you have a friend, but we call them, you have to live with it right now. It's, you're told to your place of business, but, you know, I called it, it was my call and that's the way it's gonna stay. I think the officers got stick to that. Um, I know that times are different today, everybody's screaming, they got phones, they got video that, you know, I understand that. We're all under that gun, but, um, a- as far as the charges go, uh, you're right, Jack. Um, you know, documenting your charges, which I think every shop here has been around for a long time, they document their charges. I think the only ones that are complaining here right now, I think that the average guy calling into you guys is, it's, I don't think we're getting too many complaints there. It's just the insurance companies just doesn't, they don't want to pay. And they figure because you're on a rotation list that the charges, see, an average charge for a tow to an insurance company, if you're not on the rotation list, probably guys are charging them six seventy-five, seven hundred dollars. It, it's really not that far off because of the fact is, you've got a lot of money tied up in a hundred thousand dollar truck, insurance, liability, the whole nine yards, it, fuel, it comes down, you're not making that much money. But because we're on a, a list that we're giving a lot of charges, a, a lot of toes, we're getting, we're giving it for a hundred and seventy-five dollars. So they, they want us to relay that charge, which I'm more than sure all us guys do. We give it to them for a hundred and seventy-five, but when it's not a rotation call, the charge is gonna be what an insurance should be charged.
Right, so what, so how is this affecting this legislation and it shouldn't be?
Because, because they go from one thing to the next, they don't, the only ones that are complaining is probably the insurance company. They don't want the extra charge for the winch and the, uh, extra equipment and stuff like that. They want to escape all of it altogether.
Very good. We got, we got the point. Thank you. Thank you for your feedback. And also council members?
Yes, I have, yeah, I have a question, councilman.
Joe, I have just one, can I just have a little?
One more, Jay.
No, it's the same question. So, so if they, so if the insurance co- company calls you, Frank, or anybody out there, if you got an explanation what you did, then they should have to pay you, correct? If you could explain it.
Well, if it's above and beyond anything from rotation, yes. I mean, if you, if you land a job, if, if once that vehicle gets to my shop and I have the customer sign a paper saying that, Frank, I want you to handle my insurance claim, okay?
Right.
It changes the whole scenario of the tow. Even though I passed a hundred and seventy-five dollar charge onto the insurance company, if car, if somebody else in the business comes and gets that vehicle from me after signing that they wanted me to handle that claim, I should be able to charge them to get the car ready, put the wheel back on it if it was ripped off. That's an additional charge. And I don't think the, you know, I don't think that we have to work for free because we have to do additional work to get that vehicle ready to get moved.
Right, but shouldn't the, but shouldn't the person picking the vehicle up get the vehicle ready so that you don't get charged for it?
They can't get it ready in my, in my yard. It's buried behind other vehicles. I have to move four, five vehicles to get to that vehicle, put the wheel, they're not. The liability of your insurance is not allowing that other shop, other guy to work into my vehicle, onto my yard, you know what I'm saying?
Jack, maybe I could, uh, try to clarify some of this. Joe Shortino?
Yeah, let's make it quick because we don't have much time left, but I, I want to get the other council members as well.
I guess throughout the years, there's been the rotation charges, which were really not up to date in any regard. Back when I first started, the charges were fifty-five dollars for a tow and fifteen dollars a day for storage. Um, the going rates back then with the insurance companies were like ninety-five dollars for a tow and fifty dollars for storage. So throughout the years, we've been always handcuffed with the, because we're on, I mean, it's a privilege to be on the rotation list and do everything. But throughout the years, um, we've always seemed to be between a rock and a hard place with being able to charge what we should charge and, um, an ordinance that's, you know, behind times. So I, I think we need to, um, basically put everything together and come up with some, some that everybody could agree upon. And, um, maybe that might be, it might be a good idea to have an actual tow truck commission that has a couple of guys that are in the tow truck business that understand the costs and everything, and maybe it would make it easier to relay it. So rather than, uh, the police chief getting a, um, a, a situation where, um, the insurance company is calling or someone's calling, that it would go to this commission and they could, um, maybe explain things a little bit better, not to take the chief's or the deputy chief's, um, you know, maybe I'm just in, if there were a commission, they had some input from us, I think that would be helpful.
Okay, I'll take, make note. Any other?
Yeah, this is, this is Councilman Beatrice. Uh, I just got a call, I just want to clear, get clarified on a couple of issues. So the rotation and I, I listened to deputy chief talk about like, um, if somebody wasn't there, they go by the rotation. So am I assuming correctly that if I get in an accident and I'm there and I wanted somebody that's not on the rotation to come and tow my car? You could, they can do that or you have to follow the rotation exactly?
That's correct, Joe. You can, if the individual wants to run, whoever they want to, you know, have come, they can, they have them come. Whether it's or, or, you know, someone they know in the business, they, they.
And, and they can be outside the city, they can call whoever they want, which, okay.
All we, all we ask, Joe, is if they're a timely matter.
Okay, all right. Does that happen? Does that happen a lot? I mean, or is it mostly the rotation?
It's probably fifty-fifty.
Okay, and then my, my other, my other question, and I'm looking on this too. Now, you guys are talking about a straight one seventy-five fee, okay? And, but then there's other times that it might be on a guard rail and, and there are different things. Isn't there a wenching fee already on this? So like Councilman La Monica, La Monaco said, if there was a bad accident and the car was down in a cornfield and you gotta wench it out, wouldn't you have that and you're, you, you, that's there too?
Winch.
Winch, I'm sorry. I, I, I'm, I'm just asking. I don't, I'm just asking because I'm trying to learn what's going on. So isn't there an additional in this legislation where you do get additional money or no? Am I wrong?
In the current legislation, there is, they're trying to change that to a flat rate of one seventy-five.
Okay, so, okay, but so there, so you should be one seventy-five. If you gotta pull a car out of the cornfield, you're getting extra money that's already in here for this, uh, winch fee, right?
As we, as it stands now.
Okay, all right. My last question is, you guys are talking about when certain times you need to take, you know, people don't have the money. Is that more or less like a kid with a DWI? Well, if it's an accident, if it's an accident, for the most part, you're billing the insurance company. So you should be getting your full, whatever you guys bill them, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, what Matt, Matt Naomi was saying is, uh, if it wasn't an insurance job, okay? Uh, more times than we'd like, the average guy pulls in here and he's short twenty-five dollars, he's having hard times. I'm more sure every one of these guys on this list is kind enough to give him the car. I know I do.
Right, and I.
Sometimes the guy's got a hundred dollar bill and you take the hundred and now you just blew another seventy-five. And I think every one of these guys, uh, do their part for our city, you know what I'm saying?
Right.
You know, so, so you average it out, we're not getting that seventy-five. And then they want to include winch in it, you know what I'm saying? It's like, it's not a lot of money.
But, but, and again, I'm just asking these questions. Again, again, don't, I mean, everybody has to have insurance to drive a vehicle. You're saying if somebody's not.
They, if they got liability insurance only, you're not, you're not gonna, you're not gonna get paid.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Joe, thank you. I just want to, I wanted to speed up the meeting. I, I want to give other council members, anybody else, please?
Yes, this is Jim from Jay's.
Frank?
Please let Jay speak. Let's get all the input right now and we can resolve this at another meeting, but Jay, go ahead.
Okay, um, I got this one person, Utica PD called me two weeks ago. I just want to put this in there quickly. Um, the car's a total pile of crap, it shouldn't even been on the road. And this kid is torturing me every day of my life to where I told him, just come get your car and get it out of here. Just get your car out of here. He has no money, but he's got my number now and he keeps calling it. I mean, this is the stuff we face all the time in recent, recent times, too.
Well, I agree.
And, and back to the, with the cleanup, accident scene cleanup, like I said, on the back of the flatbeds, our trucks, they get cracked up. Um, we got, we gotta, we gotta clean them up. It's gotta be, it's called money. I'm here with my driver right now. I pay him to go out.
All right, I thank you. I want to move it along. I, I really want to move this along. I love the feedback. I really like it. I think all our council members. Celeste, do you have anything to add?
I'm fine. Everybody has asked, everybody has, has asked my questions. Thank you, thank you, Frank.
Yes, Mr. Miola.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, uh, guys, first off, thank you for all the input. It's really good. Um, I, I see a lot of, uh, questions and problems that we need to resolve, um, possibly to resolve, uh, anything over the rotation. Um, a lot of the amount, maybe we need, uh, something from a photo, a couple of photos from the, uh, tow truck driver that we can document the wenching, uh, that we're doing, uh, the road cleanup that we're doing. Gentlemen, you gotta get paid for what you do. I, uh, I concur that a hundred and ten percent. Um, next part, uh, is communications. A lot of times that you guys know that you get a car in there, you don't even know whose it is. There's nothing in the glove compartment, you're empty, you can't even contact the person and telling them that you're collecting storage. And we all know about the storage letter that we gotta send out. So I believe that at the accident scene, we need an ID. At the exchange of information, we need to know whose car this is. And in addition to that, the person who is the driver of the car is going to know where the vehicle is going to be towed. So we're, we're, I think enhancing, uh, communication would also help these issues also. Um, with that said, the, a lot of things like, uh, wenching time, uh, we're gonna get us, uh, uh, you know, maybe a linear foot amount that the normal guys charge, you know, per foot, you know what I mean? You're wenching something out, you got two trucks there, it's an extra truck, you gotta get paid if you're flipping a car around. Um, the storage fees, uh, stuff like that. Uh, uh, here's another question, gentlemen, um, that we might have to get into. Uh, each, everything's credit cards now. that we might have to get into, uh, each, everything's credit cards now. So, I, I want to make sure you guys get paid for the job. That's the most important. So, you guys are out there doing the work. Um, we gotta have a system that we can maybe put in our phones that you guys can swipe credit cards and get paid for your job and get paid to drop that car off. There's no sense of, uh, um, you know, I know you want to bring it to the facility. If you bring it to your tow facility or even if they ask you to bring it to another place, you still want to get paid when you drop the car. We all know that. We all know that. It's just being fair. It's just being fair. Um, I'd like to thank you for all the input you guys put to the table. Um, it's, this, this, this ordinance is, uh, redundant in sections that we're going to clean up. Uh, the, the, one of the sections was changed in the, um, let's see. Well, they got a printout here, January first, which is even different than the one that got in front of us. So, we're gonna have to do some revising of this, uh, ordinance. Um, we will have a call, uh, Frank, if, if it's okay with you. We'd like to have another meeting to, um, put the preliminary amendment back to the table and go from there if it's okay with you, Chairman.
Yeah, I, I believe so. I think, yeah, I think we should have a discussion as a council ourselves, put something together and then, and then invite the, uh, tow truck rotation list back and, uh, I'm sure we'll come up to a happy meeting. So, I appreciate everybody's time. I, I want to do, I want to end this meeting. Appreciate everybody's input. It was great. I got my notes. I'm sure other council members do as well. So, uh, we will notify you. I have everybody's email. We'll notify you when we, we'll meet again. So, at this time, I'd like to close the meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Uh, we're gonna get right started with resolution, uh, resolution number one. This is for six-eleven Spring Street for Councilmember Burmaster. The developer plans to end and use for exit parking and storage for his adjacent business. He's going to purchase this property in the amount of two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Are you okay with this?
Oh, yes, I am.
The next one is for Councilmember Miola. It is no parking at all time ordained that section two-dash-sixteen-dash-six-zero of Utica City Code, no parking at all times. Emily Street, North Side from Clementine Street. Yeah, to Conklin Ave, to be rescinded. Are you okay with this?
Yes, yes, uh, yes, Ms. Majority Leader, yes.
Okay, the next one to discuss is the introductory to local law number four of twenty-twenty. Councilwoman Miola, you're the person who's sponsoring this. If you'd like to start us off.
Um, basically, um, council members, this is a local law that's mandated for a referendum. Um, it's, uh, it's subject under the municipal home rule law, section twenty-three. Um, it allows, uh, a two-vote on this one, which is, uh, maybe needed in our situation, maybe to, um, I guess, resolve any type of, uh, situation that we do have residency at this time. Um, I believe it's just a better solution that we can have and we can bring it to the voters. Uh, if we vote yes on it, of course, all city employees have to become residents as of January twenty-twenty-one. If there's a no vote, that means all city employees can actually live anyplace they want. Even the ones that's non-grandfathered anymore. The law is repealed in its entirety. And, uh, every city employee can, I guess, they can live in Hawaii as long as they can take a plane and get to work on time. Um, with that said, uh, it's simple. Um, the wording is very clear on it. And, uh, it requires a referendum. It requires a simple vote from the people of the City of Utica. Um, is there any questions on it?
I, I got a question, Frank. Joe, Councilman Beatrice here. I'm sorry, may, may I have the floor?
You have the floor, yes.
Okay, so, I, I, I'm, I'm not in favor of this, especially the, uh, especially the part where you're bringing the firemen into this. They should not, this should not be brought into it. We, we discussed something about police and it was, uh, passed unanimously seven to two. You're bringing the police into it, I mean, the fire into, firemen into it who have no, nothing to do with that. They have a third contract that's by state law and they should not be brought into this. And I, I'm totally, I just want you to know that I, I strongly feel against this. That's all I, I want you to know. Thanks.
Ms. Majority Leader, may I reply?
You may.
Um, I'd just like to state that at this time, Joseph, um, at the result of the five-year Police Department local law, um, that constitutes a three-conditioned platform for the residents of, uh, for the city employees. Um, you have one platform for DPW, uh, Teamsters and CSCA. You have another platform for the fire department. And now, um, as a council, support a local law, there's a third platform. So, you know, treating city employees differently concerning, uh, their residential, uh, residence condition, uh, I believe these standards should be changed. I like to treat everybody the same. If I can, if I can get my, uh, my son a dollar, I'm gonna make sure that all my kids can get a dollar. So, um, like, once again, I like to treat all people equally, all city employees with this, um, local law. Um, treating, as they're treated equally.
Um, may I reply?
You may.
Okay, so even, even if this ever was to pass, it's, everybody's not gonna be equal because the people who were already there are gonna be grandfathered in. We're gonna be going back and forth on what we already talked about. And again, like I said, the police, the fire department is totally separate from this. They have a state, their, their, their contract is by the state. And that, I'm just, I'm just giving you my, what I feel. You have the right to feel how you feel. And I'm just telling you the way I feel about it. So, it's never gonna be the same for everybody, okay? Never. Because you're gonna, they're gonna be grandfathered in and we're gonna be going back and forth with the same thing that we just went through. The police came to us and they fought for what they believed and we voted on how we felt. And you're not even given the cha, you're not even given what we voted on last week, a chance to see what happens. So, that's just, that's just my point. I gotta give you credit for your passion and your hard work. But I, I gotta tell you, I, I don't, I don't, not, as far as me, I'm one of nine, I will not support this.
Could I, could I add something, Councilman DeBrango here?
You may.
Um, back in two thousand eight, the fire department was never even in this local law when, when, when it came to vote. Uh, when it went to referendum, there was no mention of the fire department whatsoever. It was for the other city employees. And back in two thousand eight, uh, it was, yes, it was voted on and passed. But it never pertained anything to do with the firefighters, so I don't know why you're adding any little footnote for the firefighters. And the other thing is, representation from New York State Assembly and the Senate have to adopt this. And have we checked with any of our representatives to see what their input is? Because we are, in fact, going to put, if it does go to referendum and it does pass, we are gonna put them under the gun as far as if they really want to do this or not. And I don't even know if they do or not. So, uh, I think first of all, it should be striked or amended and not even include the fire department because it, it didn't include the fire department in two thousand eight. That is all. Thanks.
May I reply, Council, Council, Majority Leader? Um, Mr. Brango, the, the legis, this language in the prior legislation, two thousand eight, did include the fire department. Um, the fire department is under state law. And back in two thousand and eight, there could have been a home rule request, but to be totally honest with you, I didn't know about that until later on. And, uh, once again, I like to keep the firefighters, the police department, and all city employees on the same working conditions that the City of Utica voters would like to, uh, implement. Um, I do believe that it's their choice to state our future for residency for the people that they pay, even us. Of course, you know that according to our standards, as an elected official, we have to be city residents. So, I don't know what the voters of the city are going to do, um, if their oppo, if the opportunity comes to the ballot in, uh, November of this year. But, um, I believe it's their choice. And whatever choice that they make, I would do the best I could to enforce it.
Yeah, and this does include city employees that are hired as department heads.
We're good.
Okay, go for it.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight is May 20th, 2020 council meeting for the City of Utica Common Council. We're going to get right started with Resolution, Resolution Number One. This is for 611 Spring Street for Councilmember Burmaster. The developer plans to end and use for exit parking and storage for his adjacent business. He's going to purchase this property in the amount of $250. Are you okay with this?
Oh, yes, I am.
The next one is for Councilmember Miola. It is no parking at all time ordained that section 2-16-0 of Utica City Code, no parking at all times, Emily Street, North Side from Clementine Street. Yeah, to Conklin Ave, to be rescinded. Are you okay with this?
Yes, 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 Ms. Majority Leader, yes.
Okay, the next one to discuss is the introductory to local law number four of 2020. Councilwoman Miola, you're the person who's sponsoring this if you'd like to start us off.
Basically, council members, this is a local law that's mandated for a referendum. It's subject under the municipal home rule law, Section 23. It allows a two vote on this one, which is maybe needed in our situation, maybe to, I guess, resolve any type of situation that we do have residency at this time. I believe it's just a better solution that we can have and we can bring it to the voters. If we vote yes on it, of course, all city employees have to become residents as of January 2021. If there's a no vote, that means all city employees can actually live anyplace they want, even the ones there's none grandfathered in anymore. The law is repealed in its entirety and every city employee can, I guess, they can live in Hawaii as long as they could take a plane and get to work on time. With that said, it's simple. The wording is very clear on it. And it requires a referendum. It requires a simple vote from the people of the City of Utica. Is there any questions on it?
I got a question, Frank. Joe, Councilman Beatrice here. I'm sorry, may I have the floor?
You have the floor, yes.
Okay, so I'm not in favor of this, especially the, especially the part where you're bringing the firemen into this. They should not, this should not be brought into it. We discussed something about police and it was passed unanimously seven to two. You're bringing the police into it, I mean, the fire into, firemen into it who have no, nothing to do with that. They have a third contract is by state law and they should not be brought into this. And I'm totally, I just want you to know that I strongly feel against this. That's all I want you to know. Thanks.
Ms. Majority Leader, may I reply?
You may.
I'd just like to state that at this time, Joseph, at the result of the five-year Police Department local law, that constitutes a three-conditioned platform for the residents of, for the city employees. You have one platform for DPW, Teamsters, and CSCA. You have another platform for the fire department. And now, as a council will support a local law, there's a third platform. So, you know, treating city employees differently concerning their residential, residence condition, I believe these standards should be changed. I like to treat everybody the same. If I can get, if I can get my, my son a dollar, I'm going to make sure that all my kids can get a dollar. So, like, once again, I like to treat all people equally, all city employees with this local law, treated as they're treated equally.
May I reply?
You may.
Okay, so even, even if this ever was to pass, it's, everybody's not going to be equal because the people who were already there are going to be grandfathered in. We're going to be going back and forth on what we already talked about. And again, like I said, the plea, the fire department is totally separate from this. They have a state, their, their, their contract is by the state. And that, I'm just, I'm just giving you my, what I feel. You have the right to feel how you feel. And I'm just telling you the way I feel about it. So, it's never going to be the same for everybody, okay? Never. Because you're going to, they're going to be grandfathered in and we're going to be going back and forth with the same thing that we just went through. The police came to us and they fought for what they believed and we voted on how we felt. And you're not even given the cha, you're not even given what we voted on last week, a chance to see what happens. So, that's just, that's just my point. I got to give you credit for your passion and your hard work. But I, I got to tell you, I don't, I don't, not, as far as me, I'm one of nine, I will not support this.
Could I, could I add something, Councilman DeBrango here?
You may.
Back in 2008, the fire department was never even in this local law when, when it, when it came to vote. When it went to referendum, there was no mention of the fire department whatsoever. It was for the other city employees. And back in 2008, it was, yes, it was voted on and passed, but it never pertained anything to do with the firefighters. So, I don't know why you're adding any little footnote for the firefighters. And the other thing is, representation from New York State Assembly and the Senate have to adopt this. And have we checked with any of our representatives to see what their input is? Because we are, in fact, going to put, if it does go to referendum and it does pass, we are going to put them under the gun as far as if they really want to do this or not. And I don't even know if they do or not. So, I think first of all, it should be striked or amended and not even include the fire department because it, it didn't include the fire department in 2008. That is all. Thanks.
May I reply, Council, Council Majority Leader? Mr. Brango, the, the legis, this language in the prior legislation, 2008, did include the fire department. The fire department is under state law. And back in 2008, there could have been a home rule request, but to be totally honest with you, I didn't know about that until later on. And once again, I like to keep the firefighters, the police department, and all city employees on the same working conditions that the City of Utica voters would like to implement. I do believe that it's their choice to state our future for residency for the people that they pay, even us. Of course, you know that according to our standards, as an elected official, we have to be city residents. So, I don't know what the voters of the city are going to do if their, if the opportunity comes to the ballot in November of this year. But I believe it's their choice. And whatever choice that they make, I would do the best I could to enforce it.
Yeah, and this does include city employees that are hired as department heads through the administration. It includes that as well.
That is correct, Mr. DeBrango.
Let me give you, let me give you an example. I was on the golf commission and we had to hire a superintendent. The, the superintendent retired. So, we reached out, you know, followed the law, put it 15 days. We advertised here, advertised there, whatever. And there were certain credentials to be a golf certain, a superintendent. And we had four people apply and we reached out pretty far. And none of them, none of them had a residence in the City of Utica. And I don't believe that anybody, in this case, had the experience to be a superintendent at the golf course and live in the city. And how are you going to recruit if we had an issue with the superintendent? Finally, we had to hire the person and the person doesn't, doesn't not live in the city. So, that's just going to give you a little example of how hard it's going to be to recruit somebody and live in the city. I mean, people had, one gentleman was building a home. One gentleman says, listen, I got kids in school and I've been, you know, maybe 50 years old and I'm not moving, you know? And there was, there's, there's situations there where you can't, you can't get anybody to do the job, maybe even an engineer. But somebody might not have an engineering degree and they may be, you know, 50, 60 years old, already set in their ways and their family ways. And then you're going to force someone to reside in the city. It's just, I don't think it's going to work. I don't think it's going to work to that point. So, that's just, I just wanted to throw that out there. Thank you.
Mrs. Majority Leader, may I respond to my councilmembers' points?
Absolutely.
Frankie, I understand your points and I embrace them open-heartedly. If you check Section C of the local law, it allows for a waiver for those specialty conditions. I understand fully what you're stating and that I took in high consideration. The only thing I did add to it is a system of checks and balances. Whereas to make sure that department had really canvassed Utica and exhausted all avenues to find somebody within the city to fill that position. After that, the, the, well, his direction, whoever, whoever was the appointing authority at that time, whatever direction they took needs to be ratified by you as a council member just to make sure that they exhausted all these avenues. Of course, of course, I agree with you on that point. And there is a way of doing it with a system of checks and balances within this local law.
Does anybody else have?
I'd like to come in on, if I can have the floor.
You're all set.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. I just wanted, with Councilwoman Miola's permission, I'd like to come on as a co-sponsor of this legislation. This, to me, is a very simple thing. We have to turn this back over to the voters. I'm hearing a lot from my constituents these last two weeks about how betrayed they feel that what was their decision was simply taken from them by the council. And on that basis, that very simple, basic basis, I believe in turning this decision back to my council members. So, with Councilwoman Miola's permission, I'd like to come on as a co-sponsor.
Thank you very much, Les.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely. Councilman, who do you have the floor?
Thank you. In terms of this exhausting all avenues for an applicant, would that be for every time there's a job offering that the council would have to ratify that the, that the department or the administration has exhausted all recruitment efforts?
According to the law, if the, if the person is not, like Frankie said, the scenario that Councilman DeBrango had, it would fit quite into the law. But I'm pretty sure that most of the jobs in the City of Utica don't need specialty. This is probably, you know, one out of 10, but, and maybe even more than that. But I'm pretty sure that our best bet, that we have that kind of system of checks and balances within this law. And just in case that we have to do it, we can do it.
Any other questions or concerns? All right, we will move on to the ordinance providing for remedies regarding certain sections of electricity under Section 2-6-325 through 3-6-329 and Sections 2-6-334 through 2-6-341 of the Utica City Code. We do have, is Marima on to speak with regards to this?
Marima's, Marima's not on. This is Marcus. I can, I can have her call in. Marima's on standby, so I'm going to have her call in.
Okay, I mean, you can speak on it as well if you'd like and, or whoever wants to.
Sure. Sure, I'll start. And Danny Coles is on too. Dan's our chief building inspector. So, this is to bring electrical inspections in-house. So, right now, if you need a permit to fix electricity for the hospital, to install electricity for the hospital, it costs $35. If you've got to put a plug in your house, it costs $35. So, we're trying to get a permit fee structure that makes sense, that recognizes the size of the job the city has to do and making sure that these jobs are done right. And we're trying to get somebody in-house so that we can do the electrical inspections inside of the city. So that we have an inspector that can go make sure the work is good. And this is based on Syracuse's structure so that we can allow our codes department to decide whether or not the work meets the standards of the city.
Danny, would you like to add anything?
I would just like to add that our electrical board members are all in favor of this. One of them being Pat Costello, a union member. One of them being a master electrician that owns a small company and one that owns a large company. John Imanucci for Onnit Electric, Pat Thompson that owns another electrical company, I forget his name. But they're all in favor of this. We've spent many, many hours bringing this, what we feel is the right way into today's realm of permitting fees, permitting structure, and inspections. That's it.
Can I ask a question, Maria?
Councilwoman Friend, you have the floor.
So, this is Councilwoman Friend. You're not asking us to, to vote on this this evening, I assume? And the reason I ask that is because this didn't come to us until this morning. And I, I know that the Thursday rule has been waived while we're in this pandemic and in any case, Corporation Council is not subject to the Thursday rule. But as a matter of courtesy, you're not expecting us to vote on something that I literally haven't had the chance to read or study, correct?
Um, should I answer that? I'm not asking, I mean, your legislative decisions are up to you. So, when you want to vote on something is up to you. We've been working on this project for months and we've done it openly. Now, when the Corporation Council sent it to the common council is out of my control. But the reason why we wanted to get it in is because the New York State code changed on May 12th. We have to enforce a new code now. And there are several big projects in the city that we want to be under the current structure for because it's going to take a lot more from us to inspect those properties. So, you know, you're a councilperson. You can, you can agree not to vote on it. But from my standpoint, we've been working on this for a long time and it got introduced. When they introduced it, I didn't have control of that.
It would, it would require unanimous approval this evening. It is an ordinance, just so everyone is clear.
And I recommend a committee meeting because I'm assuming that Celeste, Celeste Friend wants to spend a little more time with it. If possible, the council would have any problem, would send it to committee. Maybe we could send it to Dalvin because it is a code issue. Dalvin, would you mind taking this piece and having a committee meeting afterward?
Not at all.
If the council doesn't mind. Majority Leader, if you don't mind.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. That's a great recommendation.
Can I just, can I just very briefly respond to something?
Sure. Councilwoman Friend, you have the floor?
I just, just very quickly, in, I mean, I know you've been working on it for months. I think it's probably a fine piece of legislation that I'm in favor of. But if you're working on something for months, I don't understand where in the, in the process of it coming to the council, it would need to come to the council on the morning of our meeting. That just doesn't make a lot of sense to me. I don't know if it's an organizational issue somewhere on the second floor. But I'm not, I'm not ever going to be happy to vote for something that I receive on the day of council unless we're in some kind of genuine emergency. And I'm, so I appreciate the work you've put into this document and into this code and I think it's probably great. But the work also, some sort of organizational work needs to also happen so that common council is not expected to literally vote on things it cannot read. So, but it sounds like we've decided that it'll be going into committee. So, I'm good, I'm good with this.
Councilwoman Neil, this is, can I speak?
You, you may, but just one second. We didn't decide yet that this was going to go into committee. That was just a recommendation from Councilman Miola. It's really.
Right, thank you. I appreciate that.
Corporate council, you have the floor.
Yeah, I would personally like to apologize to Councilwoman Friend. I thought that I sent this to the clerk last week. It had been going back and forth in a different chain of emails, so I apologize for that. But in any event, we at the Corporation Council's office did not expect this to get voted on tonight by any means.
Any questions from other council members or concerns?
I did have a question, but I guess that last statement from the Corporation Council negates my question. It was going to be to see if Councilperson Friend was completely sold on not voting for it tonight. But if there's no expectation to vote on it tonight, if it's not that important to vote on it tonight and Councilperson Friend is okay with the committee meeting, then I guess we can proceed in that way. If she was the only person that did not want to vote tonight, but if that, but if the rest of the council is in favor, being that this is a pre-conference meeting, I would avail to see if the rest of the council is on board. If Councilperson Friend would think about voting for it tonight if the rest of the council is on board with it. If not, then I, then I see having a committee meeting.
Hey, can I just say something in that regard?
Hey, can I?
Go ahead.
This is Councilman Almedeo. I've, I've been following this. I'm ready to vote on it. We can give, Celeste, if you need a couple of minutes to review it, it's, it's not that in-depth. But if, but if you really feel that you'd rather hold off, I don't have a problem with that either.
And could I say something? Could I add something to that, please?
Absolutely.
So, it, for us, I just want you to consider this when you vote. You know, there's, there's big projects going on in the city. And now, I'm going to have to hire an inspector, get the permit process in place, and implement these things. And that's not an easy lift. So, we are going to get, if, if it doesn't pass tonight or before some of those applications come in, we're going to get a $35 fee structure for the electrical work of some of the biggest buildings the city's ever seen. And I just think that, that, that limits us and our capacity to, to be able to monitor and inspect these projects.
Thank you for that point.
Madam Majority Leader, may I ask a question?
You may.
Marcus, this is Councilman Beatrice. This is directed at you. So, when I'm looking at this legislation here, the way I'm interpreting it, this is going to be a revenue stream for the city also. Am I correct in assuming that?
Well, revenue will come in, but we have to hire an inspector. And we don't issue permit fees for the purpose of generating revenues. We issue them to cover our costs of training and, and hiring people in order to make sure the city's safe. A concern in situations like this is that they give the city a $35 permit fee and then, you know, they pay somebody tens of thousands of dollars to do an electrical inspection and that's a third party. And the city doesn't have an inspector to review that. So, we just basically have to go by the word of the third party. And so, now, we have this huge project and we're taking somebody's word for it that was hired by the contractor that built the thing.
Right, okay. I'm fine. Okay. Thank you.
This is, this is Councilperson, is it my turn or does somebody else want to go before me?
You have the floor, Councilwoman.
So, we don't yet have an inspector who would do those inspections, correct? So, we're not actually in a position to enact this legislation you want us to put on tonight. Maybe we would be in two weeks when we.
The difference is.
It's not even, it doesn't sound like you're ready to do the inspections anyway.
Well, we're not going to hire somebody before the law is passed, right? Because that would be presumptuous and we're not going to hire an inspector and, and then anticipate, in anticipation of you passing the law. Because if the law doesn't pass, we just hired a position that's not in the, in an ordinance designated by the city outside of the budget. So, we're not going to do that. Now, as far as that, they're subject to the law. So, whether I have the guy or not, we can still farm out work that we can't do to a third party, just as we're doing now, if we can't build the capacity in-house. But they're, they're subject to the new permitting law, which says, pay the flat permit fee, you pay for the outlets, and the city inspects you. If, if, if we don't have the capacity to inspect, we can hire a third party, but they're subject to the new permit.
Okay, thank you.
And can I, this is Port Enforcement Coles. The third-party inspection that would occur if this resolution was passed before we hired our own inspector, the third party would be hired by us as the city, in the codes department. So, they would work for us and not the contractor. So, there, there is a method in place to start the inspection tomorrow if need be.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, we'll move on to the next one. It is a resolution that has been reworded. It is a resolution approving the shelter rent agreements. And I'd like to ask our attorney first, if we do so choose to vote on this this evening, if we can, because of the change in the resolution. I know it's a resolution and it doesn't need unanimous vote, but I just want to make sure that it's okay that we do it in this way.
Councilwoman, I think because it is, it is, it's not just, it's a different resolution. So, I think it would have to just be reintroduced, but it does not require a unanimous vote as an ordinance does, as you just said.
Yeah, as long as someone moves the particular one that's on the screen before us, then you'll be fine.
Does anybody want to discuss it and?
Question. So, I don't know if the thing that's in front of us tells us what revisions you made. I mean, so, I mean, I've got, I haven't had the time to pick that out because that revised thing came in at 6:00 p.m., right? So, I don't know the difference between what I'm looking at and what I studied over the last couple of days.
Okay, Councilwoman.
How else could you just?
Yep. So, Councilwoman, I also sent a redlined version of one of the agreements. The reason it came in so late is because we were negotiating the contract changes today with developers and incorporating recommendations of council members we spoke to, including Councilman Miola. So, I provided a new resolution. It's no longer a pilot agreement. It's a shelter rent agreement, is the changes to the resolution. And I also sent to the clerk an example agreement of a shelter rent agreement. All four agreements that were going to be subject to this resolution will be changed the same way as the example one I sent. It's just that they didn't have time to change all of the agreements so I could get it to the council before the meeting started. But some of the changes include a clawback. That is, if they do not complete all of the outlined improvements by the eighth anniversary of the agreement, we will be able to recoup all taxes that would have been paid under the agreement. There's also a clawback provision if there are codes, building code violations, inspection violations, fire code violations. If those aren't remedied within the stated period of time, there will also be a clawback. So, we think that. that this satisfies the council's concerns as they had been expressed to us because it, it basically, it's a tough enforcement mechanism to get them to maintain those things and make sure that they're in tip-top shape all of it. So that agreement was included and it is a redline.
Majority Leader, uh, may I have the floor for just a moment?
You may.
On this? Okay, I just wanted to note something. Um, there was quite a public event regarding an elevator shaft and, uh, one of the buildings within the city. I think it was last year, earlier on in the year. Um, and people reached out to the council multiple times to ask what the city could do about such things. Uh, how could the city increase their enforcement on the codes, on the building, uh, maintenance? And this agreement does just that. So I just want to point that out. Uh, this is something that was very public. People came and spoke, emailed. People still call us based on the fact that, um, the city needs more authority to, uh, enforce codes and the building improvements that are supposedly stated in these agreements. And this absolutely solidifies that.
Thank you.
Can I ask one question? So this is, I have one specific thing that I wanted to, uh, thank you, that I wanted to ask about, and it's in paragraph four, which is, and so I'm wondering whether maybe this may be in the revisions. I don't have the revised version in front of me now. But it, it has to do with this early termination, what you were talking about a moment ago in terms of clawback. And it's that the language there is, so does, I don't know if you can see where I am, uh, but early termination of pilot, paragraph four. Uh, the company agrees to use its best efforts to complete the improvement. I, I would like to amend the agreement, and I can do that on the floor. I just don't like the "use its best efforts." It strikes me as kind of vague, and who's going to judge whose efforts were best? I would just like to say the company agrees to complete the improvements. It's a pretty limited list of improvements, and they have eight years to do it. I don't see why we would need to give them that with the best efforts. Can we change this to just say, the company agrees to complete the improvements to the project by the eighth anniversary of this agreement?
Very respectfully, um, that's just very much contract language. They're going to use their best efforts. They're going to put, they're going to be diligently do this or that. The, the, it doesn't really affect the fact that they have to have those improvements completed by the eighth anniversary. So whether they use their best efforts or not, if it's not completed by the eighth anniversary, we can exercise our right to terminate. Um, I am also not sure if the council can, can, can change a, uh, you're not vote, I mean, I don't know if you can actually change the contract, but you-
I, I, I agree.
But, but I-
I agree with, uh, with Councilwoman Friend. I think that should be changed.
You want it changed to?
Specifically what she said.
Strike the "use its best efforts."
Absolutely.
I agree too.
You, all you have to do is "use its best efforts." And I, this is the very thing you're doing, right? Thank you, Councilwoman Lometico. I appreciate it.
So Councilwoman, do you have the new version of the agreement?
I don't think it's in-
Well, the new, the new version of the agreement came into my email while I was in this meeting. So I don't have the new version of it. I mean, you could stop and print it out and go find it.
I, well, I do have the new, I, I want to mention the new version is displayed on the screen. Um, I did, uh, pull those out of the email, and it's-
Can you scroll down to that page, Mr. Galimi? Can you scroll down to page four?
Council, yeah. Councilman, you're actually on the resolution. Can you pull up the agreement, please?
Okay. All right.
And could you please scroll down to paragraph, uh, like Councilwoman Friend said, paragraph four, and show the new paragraph four B, which I think should address all the concerns you are. I see.
In the new one, there is nothing that says "best efforts."
Um, no, it does say "best effort." Um, I just searched for it. It's paragraph, which paragraph is this? What page? Page four?
Paragraph four.
Page four, paragraph four. There we go. The company agrees to use its best efforts to complete the, the improvements. I just want to strike "use its best efforts" too.
Just so that we don't have to risk renegotiating with the company, can you please just show paragraph four B, uh, to Council President Galimi?
Yep, I see it.
And since this, since this paragraph specifies that if they fail to complete the improvements, then we can have the right to terminate, I, I just don't think that the "best efforts" language is very consequential in light of that, in light of that clause.
Well, it's, it's a contradiction of terms is what you have here. One says your best efforts, and one says you have, so they take a fight on that, on those two grounds there. I think we, I think we should be very specific on this.
Can, can I speak to that?
Charlie, you have the floor.
Yes.
Are you, are you a lawyer?
Uh, yes, I am. This is Charlie.
All right, I guess you could speak.
Best efforts, when put in a contract like that, it is, is one of those boilerplate terms of art things. And what it does is, it actually gives us a little more leverage because they can't just say, yeah, we're working on it, we're working on it, we're working on it, and then eight years goes by. That obligates them to get at it and get started on doing it, you know, right away. It, it's better than, and then the operative language, the one that's important, the one that triggers the termination, is paragraph B, which is, "In the event that the company fails to complete the improvements by the time, it shall be terminated." So, so that covers it. Uh, the use of the term "best efforts" in the preceding paragraph actually gives us a little more leverage because it allows us to say, hey, we're in year two, you guys aren't doing anything. You're not using your best efforts.
Well, how do you know what's their best efforts? Who's going to decide who their best efforts are? Are you going to decide, or is the company themselves going to decide?
It's a term of art. It's like best practices, uh, due diligence. It gives you something to use to measure that you have to be doing something.
So-
Take best efforts out, and okay, they can sit there till year seven and not do anything.
Majority Leader, may I have the floor? Just a second if Charlie's done?
Yes, I'm done here.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was actually going to reiterate and just phrase it differently. Uh, what Attorney Brown is stating, absolutely, if you read this contract without best efforts, uh, paragraph four A would then be able to be interpreted as, as long as we get it done by the eighth anniversary, meaning, okay, well, we'll start it three days prior. Um, I think, uh, if, if best efforts was in paragraph B, I would be in absolute agreement with what Councilperson Friend and Lometico are saying. But, um, I think when read together, best efforts actually does help. Um, and, uh, I just would like to know, uh, your feedback on that after listening to Charlie, um, on that, Charlie Brown.
Yeah.
You're asking me?
Well-
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, okay. Making sure, didn't want to step on anybody's verbal toes.
Oh, it's fine.
Yeah. I mean, I also, boy, I keep trying to scroll through this document. It's not my document. Um, you were saying that if you do amend this, you have to take this contract back to Millenia in order to renegotiate with them on the basis that you've changed some of the language? Is that right?
Correct, that's what they-
Yes, okay. Well, I, I actually, I am in general, I like this pilot agreement. I've spent, you know, the better part of the last couple of days really drilling down into it, and I think it's actually really good and really good for the city. So I will stand down on this. Um, I don't like that phrase. I just, but, uh, I take, I take your point that it's not, um, an actual legal vulnerability for us. So I will stand down on that amendment.
Councilwoman Meola, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Majority Leader. Um, I didn't get the chance to read the part-
Join the meeting.
I didn't get the opportunity to read, uh, this isn't, I just got this, I'm sorry I didn't read it at six o'clock or whenever we got it. Um, the part where, in the event that the eight years is not met and the city does want to seek reimbursement for past taxes, do we have a calculated amount or a subject estimate on that included in the contract?
Um, could, Councilwoman Galimi, can you please scroll down? I'm sorry, can you please scroll down to paragraph C? Thank you.
Tough one, it's the first time we're looking at it.
Yes.
Where I got it.
Paragraph C explains the calculation or how it'll be calculated. And the amount will be calculated by the city and sent to them.
All right. Is it, is it, is there a possibility we can, um, so there's no, um, argument on the dollar amount? Is there a possibility we can connect that as an exa- as an attachment to this contract? So, um, of course, they're notified of the, um, what's at stake just in case they don't finish it at eight years. Is that possible? Uh, as long as they're agreeing on it, is it possible we can do that?
Let me, let me, can I just say one thing? At eight years, who knows what the taxes are going to be? So we really can't put a figure on it.
No, no, no. What I'm, what I'm saying is the assessed value now, and you can, uh, you can, of course, if there's any tax increases, Frankie, they got to be applicable. But, um, the, the assessed value is something I don't want to, um, be in, in debate with.
Okay, yes.
So man, can I-
Now, and then obviously, the increase.
You have the floor. You may.
Uh, uh, as, as Councilman said, you don't know eight years from now what it's going to be. It's, it's, it's designed to get the city paid, made whole, to be paid in full what the taxes would have been if it were fully taxable. And of course, the taxes are based on the assessed value. That can change from year to year. They fought very hard. They didn't like that because the assessor can arbitrarily raise the assessed value, uh, and, and grossly inflate that amount. Uh, but we said, well, you, they can also challenge that if the assessor were to do that. So you're doing, you're doing, what you're doing is you're putting it back as if it were taxable from the very beginning. Each year, you look at the assessed value, you see what the tax rate was for that year, and that's how much they owe minus what they already paid. So it's self, it's self-computing. In the event that it happens, it's just a matter of taking indisputable numbers, like the assessed value each year, and the tax rate each year, and doing the math.
Okay, well, I, we agree with you, but do you believe there might be a dispute, like you said, in the assessed value and this calculation? If we have a contract, um, why have a dispute where we can, um, you know, uh, spell it out for them? The assessed value at the time of signing is this. Uh, any additional tax increase will be applicable. So at least they know what, uh, you know, what might be, you know, they're confronted with. Um, by not putting the assessed value to begin with, you're leaving yourself a gray area for, open the door for them to come back and say, hey, listen, I, like you just said, uh, I don't like the assessed value. So why do that in the contract?
It's not something that they can dispute in the contract. Assessed value is determined by the assessor. As of August 1st every year, there's a process by which they can dispute the assessed value each year. If they don't do that, then the assessed value is what it is each year. They can't dispute it legitimately. And if you were to fix the assessed value as of now, assessments can go up.
Of course.
If you're fixing it now, you're going to be freezing it at, at current rates, which was part of the problem.
Wait, whoa, 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 Charlie. I didn't say you didn't have to put a clause in there if the assessed value changed on the property. Whoa, come on, let's be creative with this thing. You know, if we're going out there, we're giving them a chance to do this pilot program. I want it shut down and tight, all right? I don't want them to have any wiggle room at all on it. And if they don't want to do it, that's fine with me. First off, the assessed value of this property now, okay? And if there's an additional assessed value after, they're notified of this with our assessor, with our assessor. All right, I want this done so tight that when we go to court, you'll walk in, you say, okay, we got to pay City of Utica back taxes. Uh, the judge says done, and they walk out. You don't have this tight enough for me.
What can you do to tell them?
Like I said, Charlie, first off, we start, we start off with the assessed value. All right, they are notified, the assessed value and the full taxable amount for both county, city, and school. They are notified of this during our first year. Now, if the assessed value doesn't change, or any increase in the property does not change, any, any increase in taxes is applicable to this property. So now they know that the assessed value and any increase in taxes that we do on a sporadic basis, well, hopefully not next year, but increased taxes on our properties, they have to come in compliance with it. I want it simple. I want it clean. No, it doesn't say that, Charlie. We don't have the assessed value to start with. We have no base.
We have an assessed value to start with. Look at the assessment rule.
I, I, I don't see the amount, Charlie. The, you're, you're, you're not putting the amount of the properties to begin with. It's not in there.
It's an assessment rule.
Charlie, all right then, would you mind attaching the, uh, uh, our, put a tax value of assessment with contract? Would you mind doing that?
I agree. Put it in the done, put it in the done, the monitor, that's it, and it should be over. What it is currently.
We can, we can do that.
I, did we not have the, uh, the addendum in the spreadsheet? I remember when, uh, the Majority Leader originally introduced this. I believe she did read taxable amounts with the assessments. Um-
Well, no, that wasn't, that, that was the agreed amount of payment, uh, Michael. That was the agreed amount of payment.
Okay.
Because this works, this works, this, this pilot program, this, I mean, this program works on their, um, occupancy. And what is nice about this is that they have to pay us percentage of their occupancy throughout this whole, you know, term of this 30 years, um, at full assessed val, at full occupancy value. So if they have 50% occupancy, they still have to pay us 100%, which is good for this contract.
So Councilman, are you asking there to be an addendum just simply reciting what the current assessed value is?
Yes, so there's no dispute, no dispute, sir.
Yeah, we can do that.
I appreciate that, Council.
Any other questions or concerns?
Kate, I just have one very quick thing, uh, this Councilwoman Friend. I, I didn't mean to beat the dead horse, but I was already annoyed that I got something at 11 o'clock this morning, and then while I was in a committee meeting, I got this, like the revised version. I just, it's really important to me to be diligent, and nobody in the good people of South Utica didn't elect me to rubber stamp anything. So we've really got to get that kind of communication or organization about how things get to us that really has to kind of tighten up. Because, um, I'm hap, I want to vote for this. I've, like I said, I think it's a really good agreement. I think it's really good for the city, really good for our people. But, um, but I, I really don't want to be regularly asked to vote on things that I literally can't read. So, and that's the last I'll complain about this today.
Yeah, Councilwoman, this is Kate Hartnett. Um, you know, it's, it's certainly not what we want to send legislation, you know, an hour before a meeting. Uh, the reason that happened with this piece of legislation is because we were negotiating these contract changes right up until about 5:08 PM today. Um, that's, that's the only reason why, it's highly atypical.
And I can add, we were, we were negotiating it because we were trying to get to terms in that council members had indicated they wanted. That is what the renegotiation was about. And it just took time.
Thank you, Council.
My suggestion to you is renegotiate on Tuesday, not Wednesday. Thank you.
I love you, Frankie.
Does anyone have anything else? Uh, anything, other pieces of legislation that want to be entertained tonight that anyone wants to talk about while we're still in pre-calcus caucus? All right, then I guess we will stop and then go into the regular meeting at 7:00 o'clock. Uh, meeting adjourned.
Thank you, Majority Leader.
Is there a second?
Second. Brango's second.
All right, so- Okay, it is May 20th, 7:07 PM. Calling this meeting of the Common Council of City of Utica to order. Uh, I'm gonna call the roll. McNeil.
Here.
Birmaster. Birmaster.
Can you hear me?
Friend.
I'm here.
Here.
Miola.
President.
Moody.
Here.
Petrus. Petrus.
Here.
Williamson.
Here.
Lomarico.
Here.
Tabrango.
Here.
Clerk.
Here.
Thank you. Deputy Clerk.
Here.
Okay, this meeting is now called to order. Uh, if you would please address the flag that is shared on the screen or address the flag that is behind Councilman Miola, we will now say the pledge. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
To the United States of America. To the Republic, which it stands. One nation, under God.
Born and unborn.
Now we will take a moment of silence for the deceased members of the council, specifically Remo Zagarelli and also Mike DeSantis this evening. Thank you very much. Okay, the first order of business this evening will be public hearing. Um, while we did pass a piece of legislation calling for a public hearing at the last meeting, it was not advertised in the paper as expected, so we will be recalling that public hearing this evening by way of resolution. So the public hearing is now closed. Uh, the next order of business will be the reading of the minutes from the previous meeting. Can, uh, we acknowledge that we have had the minutes distributed, please?
Yes, the, um, minutes were emailed to the council members on Thursday, May 14th. And if the public wants to request them, they're in the clerk's office. They could just send me an email, and, um, we'll have them available for them.
Thank you very much. Uh, do we have a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes this evening?
I would like to please dispense with the reading of the minutes, please.
Do we have a second?
McNeil.
I'll second it.
Okay, McNeil is the second on that. Uh, the motion was made by councilperson Friend. Uh, quick roll call vote. McNeil.
Here.
Birmaster.
Here.
Or say, uh, yea or nay.
Yea.
All right, yeah. Friend.
Yea, yea.
Friend.
Hi.
Thank you. Miola.
Yea.
Moody.
Yep. Yea.
Lomarico.
Yea.
Tabrango.
Yes.
Okay, the reading of the minutes has been dispensed this evening. Uh, do we have any miscellaneous communications, Madam Clerk?
Uh, we do not have any miscellaneous communications.
Thank you very much. Reports from the city officers and department heads. Uh, Assistant Chief Noon, would you like to report anything from the Bureau of Fire?
Uh, I have nothing to report at this time. I believe, uh, Chief Ingersoll is on the line as well.
Ah, you are correct. I apologize. Uh, Chief Ingersoll.
Uh, hi, everyone. I'd just like to say that, um, you know, the fire department's responded to well over 2,000 calls since the start of the, uh, COVID crisis, and, um, the men and women of the fire department are, uh, really holding their own, and, uh, they're doing a great job, uh, providing a lot of service. And, uh, I'd just like to thank all those guys, uh, the men and women of the fire department, doing such an outstanding job right now.
Thank you very much. Um, Deputy Chief Noonan, is, uh, Chief Williams on, or would you like to report?
Nothing to report, Mr. President.
All right, thank you very much. Corporation Council?
Nothing to report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other city officers that would like to report?
Um, Council President Gleyme?
Yes, you may have the floor.
I just want to encourage councilpeople in their district, um, because of the COVID crisis, a lot of the building, um, and construction that goes on in people's homes and, and, and residential and commercial properties were stopped. Um, New York State's trying to start that up again. Um, E S D has a bunch of rules and guidelines they have to follow, but the code department is here to, to walk them through it and, and to get people back to work. So if, if, if you have people or contractors in your district or projects that, that have been frozen, um, you know, give them my number, put them in touch with our department, and let's get them back looking.
Thank you very much. That was the Commissioner of Codes reporting. Anything else, Commissioner Phillips?
I'm good. That's all I got. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Okay, that ends the reports. We've gone through communications. We are now at remonstrances, appeals, and legislation from the floor. Uh, Councilwoman and Majority Leader, McNeil, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this evening, I would like to start off by introducing and adopting Resolution Number Five, the resolution approving the shelter, shelter rent agreements.
Okay. I have the resolution approving shelter rent agreements shared on the screen. That would be Resolution Number Five as revised. Would you like to read, or shall we summarize?
Whatever you would like.
All right, if you'd like, I can summarize that. Uh, resolution approving shelter rent agreements. Um, well, prior to me reading, uh, is there a second?
I'll let it go.
I'd like a second.
Okay, there was multiple seconds. Um, I heard Friend, so we'll go with Friend. All right, oh, there's someone else. Maybe they, they beat her to the punch. All right.
Don't worry about it.
I'm just, I'm just having some fun. All right, so whereas, all right, thank you, thank you. Whereas each of the companies identified in the four shelter rent agreements is the nominal fee owner of the real property and multiple family housing project identified in each of the attached sheltered rent agreements. And whereas the beneficial owner and its predecessors entitled for each project have operated the project so as to provide subsidized rental assistance pursuant to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development's HUD, Section 8 Housing Assistance Program and other programs. And whereas each project has operated under a tax agreement approved by the city hereafter the current agreement, which current agreement is scheduled to expire by its term. Whereas upon information provided by the company, in order for the project to continue to be economically feasible and thereby continue to receive rental subsidies, the company cannot pay the full amount of the annual real estate taxes on the property to the local municipal taxing jurisdictions. And whereas the continued operation of each project, et cetera. Now therefore be it resolved as it follows pursuant to 577 of the Private Housing Finance Law, the land, property, and improvements comprising each project shall be exempt from city, county, and school real property taxes to the extent of 100% of the value of said property. Further resolved, the terms and conditions of said exemption shall be, uh, shall be as set forth in each of the respective shelter rent agreements substantially in the form as attached heretofore and which agreements are hereby approved. Further resolved, the mayor is authorized to execute the attached agreements and other documents as may be required to fulfill the intent of this resolution. This, um, the motion to move, uh, this piece is on the floor. If there are no other motions, uh, at this time or debate, it will be brought to a vote. Would anyone like the floor?
Oh, Mr. President, can I qualify? Frankie Miola?
Yes, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, everybody knows that, uh, this, we're, um, moving into this direction for housing is, uh, quite difficult. Um, but, um, the hurdle that this company has to take, um, would be quite heavily if they don't come to compliance. Um, I also understand that these two properties are in my colleague's, uh, Councilwoman McNeil's district and Councilman, Councilman, um, Moody's district. Um, I hope that you will, um, peruse these properties when you guys have the opportunity. Um, hopefully, they will maintain their contract. And if they don't, of course, there's, uh, very heavy ramifications. Um, in our caucus meeting, um, there was a agreement, um, and my colleagues supported it, that an attachment for the assessed value of this property during signing. Um, there is a clause in this contract that the mayor will supply all attachments. I'm under the impression that my council agrees that the attachment should be there. should be there for the assessment. There's arguments, um, if there's any dispute, um, um, through litigation in the future. So, uh, I will be supporting this, uh, legislation, and thank you very much, Council.
Thank you. Would anyone else like the floor prior to the vote? Okay, at this time.
Mc.
McNeil. Okay, that's a yes, uh, clerk from McNeil. Um, Birmaster.
Yes.
Friend.
Yes.
Miola.
Yes.
Moody.
Yeah.
Um, Beatrice.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Lomarico.
Yea.
Debrango.
Yes.
All right, let the record show that was 90's adopted. Councilwoman and Majority Leader, you have the floor.
Mr. President, at this time, I would like to, uh, send to committee specifically the Codes Committee the ordinance provided for remedies regarding certain sections of electricity under Section 2-6-325 through 3-6-329, and Sections 2-6-334 through 2-6-341 of the Utica City Code.
All right, so you're making a motion to move this piece of legislation this evening. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, now, now that it's seconded, uh, is there a motion to commit? Oh?
You don't need a motion to, to submit it. She needs a motion to put it at the table. But she's already submitted it. You have to read it first.
Well, it has, oh. This piece, we actually received, um, this morning, so this, this is being, uh, brought to the floor.
I understand that.
Okay.
I understand that. Legislation is introduced, doesn't need a motion. As it's introduced, if the person doesn't believe it, if it passed that night, and that's Miss, uh, Councilperson McNeil, moves that the matter be, uh, either tabled or sent to committee. She's already done both.
Respectfully, we didn't, we didn't actually do, do those yet because they weren't voted on, but I agree with you, uh, Judge Guaramone. Um, Councilwoman McNeil is moving this and making the motion to commit, um, which we have a second for. Um, so if we could read this, um, would you like to summarize, McNeil, or shall I?
Rage out of it, Mike.
All right. Ordinance providing for the remedies regarding certain sections of electricity. Uh, who has the phone ring? Let me see here. Okay, beautiful. Ordinance providing for remedies regarding certain sections of electricity under Sections 26325 through 36329, and Sections 26334 through 26341 of the Utica City Code. Whereas the City of Utica, in an effort to update the electricity ordinance and modify the fee structure set forth herein, and to allow the City of Utica to become the inspecting authority of all electrical work within the city, and in the effort to closely monitor the safety of updates, modification, and/or work to electrical openings or units specified herein the City of Utica, desires to amend the electricity ordinance to accomplish this goal. And whereas this ordinance shall amend and add provisions to Sections 26325 through 36329, and Sections 26334 through 26341 of the City of Utica Code of ordinances. Whereas all other sections not specifically mentioned herein shall remain in effect with no changes. Now therefore be it ordained that the City of Utica hereby amends Section 26325 through 36329, and Sections 26334 through 26341. To read as follows, Division One Generally, uh, everything displayed on the screen was gone over and discussed in the pre-meeting conference committee of the whole meeting. Um, this legislation currently has a motion to move and commit to the Codes Committee. It is seconded. Uh, your votes, McNeil.
Yes.
Birmaster.
Yes.
Friend.
Yes.
Miola.
Yes.
Moody.
Yeah.
Beatrice.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Lomarico.
Yea.
Debrango.
Yes.
Okay, motion to commit has passed. It's in the Codes Select Committee of the whole. Okay.
Marcus Phillips.
Has left the meeting.
Councilwoman, you once again have the floor, if you'd like to move any other legislation.
Mr. President, I'm all set this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Councilman Birmaster, you have the floor.
Okay, okay, I have in front of me, um, it looks like a legislation for a public hearing on, on 611 Spring Street.
Okay, yes, we do. It is on the screen, shared. Um, Councilman Birmaster is moving the resolution to call for a public hearing for the sale of 611 Spring Sheet, Spring Street to David P. Davis for the sum of $250 by the Urban Renewal Agency. The public hearing will be held Wednesday, June 3rd, 2020 at 7:00 PM, if this resolution shall pass. Your votes.
McNeil, yeah.
Mister, but wait, Mister, I'm sorry. Mister President, you need a second, and then we can have the votes? I'm sorry.
Who was the second on that?
Thank you.
I thought I heard one. I.
McNeil.
McNeil, you're the second. Okay, thank you. Um, your votes, McNeil.
Yes.
Birmaster.
Yes.
Friend.
Yes.
Miola.
Yes.
Moody.
Yeah.
Beatrice.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Lomarico. Lomarico. Councilman Lomarico, uh, is your audio still up?
Yes. Did I miss it?
You did.
I'm sorry, say it. Step away a second. What we, what's going?
Okay, this is the, uh, resolution calling for the public hearing, 611 Spring Street on the screen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Debrango.
Yes.
All right, this resolution has passed.
90's adopted.
Thank you. Councilman Birmaster, do you have anything else to move?
Well, it looks like I have a sale of such use of property.
Okay, we have, uh, Councilman Birmaster moving, uh, the sale of 611 Spring Street. That is the ordinance that is paired with the call for the public hearing, uh, between David P. Davis.
Dan Coza.
And the Urban Renewal Authority for a sum of $250. Is there a second?
McNeil.
Okay, it's been moved. Is there a motion to place this in committee?
I'll make.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Uh, your votes to place this in committee, McNeil.
Yes.
Birmaster.
Yes.
Friend.
Yes.
Miola.
Yes.
Moody.
Yeah.
Beatrice.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Lomarico.
Yea.
Debrango.
Yes.
Thank you. It has been placed in committee. Councilman Birmaster, do you have anything else this evening?
Uh, not at this time. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Councilperson Friend, third district, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I just want to comment on a couple of things tonight. Uh, since we've started this live streaming, these meetings, um, we're getting enormous, uh, turnout. So, for these live streamings. So, the last meeting that was two weeks ago has now had over 1,000 views on YouTube. Um, and that doesn't even count the people who are looking at it on, say, cable. So, I think it's really interesting that there are, uh, tons of people at home, either watching it live or perhaps going to YouTube later and, and watching it on their own time. And I think it's interesting that, um, a certain number of people will come out to the actual meeting. But, you know, when people come to the meet, to the meeting, when we, when we hold it in person, of course, they have to leave their house, and, uh, you know, maybe they've got kids to put to bed, and, uh, they've got dishes to wash or dinner to eat. So, you know, only so many people come. But when you can watch it at home on your own ti, own time, or even just live streaming it, it makes it so much more accessible, and people are really tapping into that accessibility. I find that really exciting. No one will be surprised, uh, by that. You know, I always say people want to be involved in their government, and this live streaming is making it so much easier for them to do so. I think that's terrific. So hello to all the people who are out there, uh, watching us, um, or watching us later. So, I, I think that that's really terrific. The other thing I want to say is just, um, I'm feeling a little nervous these days as we slowly begin to reopen, um, uh, as the pandemic is hopefully winding down. I want to urge people to continue to follow the advice of the experts. Wear a mask when you're out and about. Keep your distance from others. Limit your exposure whenever you can. Wash your hands. All the same advice that we've all hopefully been following all along. I want to encourage everybody to still, uh, stick to that path, uh, for, um, the ongoing future. Um, I think we're nowhere near the end of this, even as we do make, uh, sort of necessary choices to begin to resume some of our normal activities. So, I just want to remind everyone of that, uh, so that we can all stay, um, healthy and safe, and, uh, enjoy, uh, enjoy life on the other side of this pandemic. That's all I have for tonight. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman and President Protemp, Miola, you have the floor. Fourth district.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I, first off, I'd like to thank you for that moment, moment of silence for, uh, uh, fourth ward councilman, uh, way back a few years, Remo Zegarelli. Um, I just want to bring back, uh, the fir, the first thing I remember about Remo, uh, he taught me how to go door to door. Um, he taught me how to ask people for votes. Uh, he had a style, he had a skill, and he had a smile. Um, you couldn't, when Remo asked you for a signature, you got it. He got it. Uh, he had a class above him that was, uh, something that, uh, I admired and, um, something I'll never forget. Um, God bless you, Remo. Uh, Michael DeSantis, um, if you guys remember my colleagues, I told a story about, uh, uh, an old referendum that I had to take to the appellate division. Uh, Michael was the attorney on it. He was the one accompanying me. Um, we spent a lot of hours together, got to get to know each other, and, uh, of course, um, God bless, if, uh, God bless LaCresia Hunt, that's, that's her, that's her brother. Um, Michael was, uh, a very smart attorney, and, uh, he brought me, uh, a lot of knowledge. Um, I'll never forget the, uh, what he taught me, and, uh, I'll never forget what he gave me. Um, God bless you too, Mike. I, God bless you. Um, getting, uh, getting back to, uh, council business, um, I'd like to, uh, move proposal ordinance number three. Um, to be ordained, no parking at all times, Section 2-16360, Schedule E of Utica City Code. No parking at all times, Emily Street, North Side, Clemencia Street, to Conklin Street, to be rescinded. I'd like to motion to, uh, move this, Mr. President.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Thank you.
Who, who was the second on that?
McNeil.
All right, thank you very much. Your vote, does anyone have, this is, you're ready for the vote on this? We good? Okay, McNeil.
Yes.
Birmaster.
Yes.
Friend. Friend.
Yes.
Thank you. Miola.
Yes.
Moody.
Yeah.
Beatrice.
Yes.
Beatrice.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Lomarico. Uh, Lomarico, you are muted. Lomarico.
Yea.
Thank you. Debrango.
Yes.
All right, ordinance number three, 90's adopted. Thank you. Okay, Councilman Miola, back to you. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, our second order of business would be to set, uh, local law number four on the table according to Municipal Law 20-4. Um, this local law has to sit on the table for seven days. It's a mandate. Um, it's a simple local law. Um, basically, a yes vote is a concerning residency. The yes vote would, uh, offer the new city employees as of, um, January 2021, um, to become city residents. That's all of them. Uh, the no vote would offer every city employee, even the one who are employed now, would give them the opportunity to, uh, move out or go any place they want. So, um, I believe that the voters of the City of Utica should, uh, have the opportunity to vote on this piece of legislation in November, and I'd like to have it sit on the table for seven days. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Just to clarify, the yes and no vote that Councilman Miola was describing was what would end up on a ballot measure, not reflecting the yes and no votes on the motion to introduce and table. Uh, does anyone have anything to, uh, debate at this time and/or, um, discuss? Would anyone like the floor? Okay, is there a second to the motion to move and table this introductory local law?
Uh, Mr. President, you don't need a, uh, motion to move or table. All you need is one council member. It's only on the table for seven days.
Uh, that, that is absolutely, uh, not procedurally true. Uh, any motion that a legislative body takes, uh, must be voted on by the legislative body. Um, so, uh, with the council, is there a second to, uh, table this local law?
Mister, Mr. President, if you see the, uh, judge's memo and read it recently, um, it offers, uh, the MHA, all you need is, uh, one council member has the ability to put it on the table, sir. Um, if you want to confer with, uh, our, our attorney.
I, uh, wrote a, I wrote a memo today. I don't know if you've got it, and because the memo, uh, involves Mr. Brown, is Mr. Brown here?
Charlie Brown? Charlie is here, yes.
Uh, the memo, uh.
Yes, I am.
Yes, uh, well, as long as that, the memo that, that you all got probably didn't get to computer to sit because, uh, we were discussing this as of, uh, for almost a week and a half now, and we talked this morning, as a matter of fact. Mr. Brown, uh, they'll see my memo at some point, uh, because it, uh, it mentions you specifically, uh, on the question of whether there is a need for a motion and a second to lay this local law on the table. Uh, I would like, as the Corporation Council that defends these matters, should there be a question in the courthouse, would you like to comment? I know my memo says what I think about it.
Uh, yes, I agree 100% with your memo. Uh, you are the council's attorney. You're the boss as far as their procedural requirements are. They're rules of order, and we can, uh, no tr, no problem defending that in, uh, in any lawsuit.
Which, which portion, uh, Attorney Brown?
The portion, the portion where any, anything that is introduced goes no further unless there's been a motion and a second and approval by the body.
Exactly, okay.
Correct. But it, uh, uh, but you have the opportunity to put it on the table. It's not introduced to do any direction where it has to go into the committee or anything else. The local law can also sit on the table very simply by an email. It's also justified in Section 20.
No, no, that, all right, so two things. One, um, if you'd like to take it up legally, you may. Um, I am the elected body, uh, that does chair these meetings. Um, while I have limited powers, uh, the one thing that I am elected to do is, um, basically, um, chair these meetings and decide the order, precedence, and, uh, ruling of how the motions are passed. You absolutely need a second to any motion a legislative body takes, and you absolutely need the body to vote on said motion. So, um, you could either not have a second and let this motion die, or this motion to table can receive a second, and we can vote on it. Um, so if there's no second, this goes no further.
Well, according to, according, according to the judge's memo, it doesn't need it. Uh, did you guys read it?
No. Uh, Frank, I, Charlie and I have conferred, and the statute is clear about a couple of things. Statute says that you cannot pass a local law unless it's been on the table, uh, for seven days. It says nothing about anything else, but it says that earlier in the statute, in the beginning, uh, you follow the, uh, rules of procedure of the council. The common council has never introduced a local law without a motion, uh, to lay it on the table. And in fact, it has refused in the past to receive a local law, but then received a second, uh, and did not have a successful motion to put on the table. Now, at first, Mr. Brown, uh, objected to that theory, but then he had. that is presented to the council has to have some sort of action by the council. The councilman, any councilman can introduce a local law. However, what happens is to, from that moment on, is up to the council. Now, you are correct, Mr. Miola, when you say there is an alternative method to presenting the matter through that mail service. But the common council of City of Utica, as far as I know, has never used that device. And what that device means has never been tested and is not part of our rules of procedure because we've never done it. That's the ten day rule.
Well, at this, at this time, Your Honor, all our procedures, our bylaws have been put in pause, so the only procedure we do have to rely on right now is the municipal home rule law. So I can't understand.
The municipal home rule law does not specifically say, it says that the rules of procedure of the council, well, the rules of procedure of the council as far as the written rules, but it is the manner in which the council has proceeded in time. Memorum, I don't remember ever putting a local law or anything before the council or tabling anything without a motion. Now, that was my original decision when asked about this by Council McVeil almost two weeks ago. Later on, Mr. Brown had a different opinion. And then from that point on, we have been conferring on this looking for law, but there's nothing in the law, the state law, that says anything other, any prohibition, except that you can't pass it. You can't pass it. It doesn't say how it gets before the body. It gets introduced, and the rules in our body always is, same thing with a ordinance. Ordinance gets introduced, the person who presents that ordinance has to make a decision. Councilman Front indicated on a matter, that she was not ready to vote on it. So that's a no vote. It was an ordinance. It can't be adopted, it would be, it would be, it would be rejected. So what happened, someone makes a motion to put it into committee or do something else with it, table it, that motion has to be seconded and be approved. The council. Now, I'm sorry, Frank, it would be a denial that I prepared after speaking with Charlie Brown at our last meetings this morning. But I did send a memo to everybody. If you haven't seen it, I thought you'd seen it by now, but it's there. And that's the conclusion he comes to. And there's another thing that is important here. You were as a point of law, Frank, and as a point of law, two things happen. If the common council is sued and the City of Utica, because of this procedural matter, the defense of that suit would have to be the corporation counsel. So the reason we were talking over and over is that I have to, he says I'm the one that tells you what the rules are, but he's the one that has to go to court. The only time outside counsel goes to court or me is when the corporation counsel won't go to court for you because it doesn't agree with you. Obviously, he, he takes the position that if he's going to defend any kind of action as matter, it's the action that says that when you present legislation and it's going to be tabled, that table requires a motion. That's what the president has always done in every piece of legislation I've ever seen, and that's what he did here. Now, what happened during those weeks of discussion was a couple of councilmen said how could any of us take the position that we have to table it whether we want to or not, and when we haven't done that ever in the past? Now, Frank, you've only been here since January, but if you looked at the history of what we've done, even when you were councilman before and president, there was always a motion. Nobody ever put a local law before the body, there wasn't a motion to table it. Put it on the table for seven days. That has to be in the record. I make a motion that this matter be tabled for seven days, it gets a second and it's tabled. Now, this has had a motion to table, does it have a second?
It does. Councilperson Friend did second this, yes.
Okay. Now, you have a vote on the motion to table it. That's the position that the corporation counsel takes, and that's the position, if he's going to defend that matter, he says he will, and I have no objection to it because the law says, it mentions that we follow our rules of procedure and may, and number two, the statute tells us what we must do, which is put it on the table for seven days before we can pass it. We're not talking about passing it now, we're just talking about whether to table it, and we've always done it this way. I'm sorry, Frank, but that's the conclusion we came to, and I sent it out in the memo today. I apologize for that. Councilman Front's probably going to chew me out for that later on or somebody else. I'm sorry, but, you know, we just kept wrestling with this thing for at least the last ten days. And we had a lot of meetings. So that's what we are. In fact, this Sunday morning, I still wasn't sure, recall, and we have had a meeting of minds now searching the law. Of course, this can get out of bounds through our municipal rule thirty-seven, but that's the same, I think in the term limits and that in a pandemic, I don't think you're ever going to be able to get those signatures, or anybody will, going out and get those signatures. Anyway, that's it, Mr. President. I have pretty much to say, thank you very much, Mr. Brown, that they have their prerogative. There's a motion and a second on the floor. It's up to the president to take that. Control of the rest.
Very much. Thank you, Judge Garamone, Charlie Brown. Motion to table, your vote, McNeil.
No.
Burr Master.
No.
I have a point of inquiry.
Yes. You may have the floor.
Yeah. Well, really a point of order. Is this, is this, the vote that we're taking is to place on the table? I thought that, that Councilman Miola made a motion to introduce it, which would just require a second and wouldn't it just stay on the table for seven days?
No, no, that is not the case. So let me, hold, hold on, let me, let me clarify. I was going to just iterate this after the vote on the motion to table. Any motion that is made in this legislative body or any other legislative body, whether it's a motion to resolve.
This is not a motion. This is not a motion. You guys can't comprehend the municipal home rule law. My God, okay, go ahead.
Councilperson Miola, Councilperson Miola, you made a motion to introduce, and then there must be a motion to lay on the table, and it requires a second. You had a second to the introducing table, and it is now up for a vote. At this time, Councilman Moody, that's, every, every motion, every action from this legislative body requires a vote from the legislative body. One, two, three, or four council people cannot act without the actual supporting vote of the majority of this council, and in some cases, a supermajority, if you look at, you know, different, different, there are some media sources.
Now, Mr. President, if we follow that assumption and that premise.
It's not an assumption. That is Robert's Rules of Order and how everything works, okay.
Okay, I get all of that. I read the entire.
Mr. Moody. Councilman Moody.
But, but hold on.
Judge Garamone, let's, I'm going to.
But Judge, I want to ask a question before you answer. Judge, I want to ask a question before you answer. Would that then assert the assumption that I, that it takes the majority in order for me as an elected official to introduce any law resolution?
Absolutely. That's how I've been processing all of the motions for the past five years.
But is that a, but is that a question of precedent as opposed to a codified procedure? If it's not codified in that way, then precedent would not usurp the authority of what's written down on paper.
This isn't precedent. This isn't precedence. Any action of the legislative body takes the majority vote to approve that action, no matter what it is.
But, but, and I'm not saying, and I'm not saying I support the legislation. Yeah, Mr. Moody, let me say something. There are two errors here. Number one, when Councilman Miola presented the local law, he did not need a motion. Any councilman can present any piece of legislation they want to the body. They don't need a motion, they don't need permission. The step two is where the rules of how a body proceeds is what we're talking about. You've been a councilman since January. This council, and I've been with it twenty-five something years, everything that goes forward by this council needs a motion to either table it, approve it, disapprove it, whatever, and it has to be seconded. You need a motion to vote on it. So if I introduce a piece of legislation, and I know it doesn't have the votes, I probably have usually redrawn. That's number one. If I go forward with it, then there has to be a motion from the originator to save it. I would change my mind, not ask for a vote, I make a motion to lay it on the table or refer it to a specific committee. That needs a second. That has to be voted on. And to answer your question, five votes on the common council of any legislative body with a majority can do what it wishes about legislation. You cannot, the thing that, the two things that came to our conclusion. Number one, this local law is a little premature because the other local law that you approved doesn't have a public carrying on it till tomorrow, and we'll assume it will be approved. There's no indication it won't be, but then there's a period when it, there's a waiting period when it becomes actual law. There is already, I can't remember what it is, but there is. So this is already amending and doing away with something you passed two weeks ago.
Judge, judge, can I interrupt you for one second?
No, Councilman Miola, let the judge finish, please. Thank you. Judge Garamone, you still have the floor.
We follow the same procedure every single meeting, and you have followed that procedure every single meeting. We have straightened out the president, myself, and the rest of the council, that anybody can introduce legislation and does not need a motion. Once it's introduced, though, what happens after that is up to the body. If they want a vote out of that night, somebody can move the question and defeat it right then.
Exactly.
You can't do that with a local law. A local law, you have to have a motion to what's happening. Now, you've got a motion to lay it on the table. If the body.
Judge.
If it doesn't, it doesn't, it can't enforce the statement of the situation it doesn't want.
All right, Judge Garamone, I'm going to give the floor to Councilman Miola for a moment, and then after you have the floor, Councilman Miola, I'm going to continue.
Okay, I'd just like to read you, Judge, I'd like to read the council, section, section twenty of the MRR, section four. It says very clearly, Judge, "A proposed local law may be introduced only by a member of the legislative body at a meeting of such body or as may be otherwise prescribed by the rules of procedure adopted by the legislation."
And that's why, all right.
There's no rules. We have no rules for a local law.
Absolutely not. It's in our charter. Councilman Miola, the rules are in our charter, and they, they, absolutely, and it must lay on the table for seven days. You need a motion to lay on the table. So we're going to finish voting on the table, on the motion to lay on the table. You have introduced it.
I like to see those rules. I like to see them.
Well, you can, you could do that after. It's literally in the charter. Go ahead.
I'm going to look right now.
Right ahead. And while you're doing that, I'm going to finish the vote on the motion to lay on the table. Friend. So currently, we have McNeil voting no, we have Burr Master voting no, Councilperson Friend motion to lay on the table. Councilperson Friend? I believe you're muted. There you are. Hello?
Yes.
Councilman Miola, would you like me to hold off and call you at the end of the roll?
Nope, I'm voting yes. I already know the law.
Okay, so you're voting yes? Okay, Councilman Moody.
This is to lay it on the table?
To lay on the table.
No.
Councilman Beatrice.
No.
Councilman Williamson.
No.
Councilman Lomarico.
No.
Councilman DeBrango.
No.
Okay, the motion to lay on the table has not passed. Seven nays defeated. Do we have any other business this evening? Any other local laws, ordinances, and/or resolutions before I move on to Councilman Moody for remonstrances? Councilman Miola?
I'm all set. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Moody, Fifth District, you have the floor.
Thank you. I want to thank all my colleagues and Mr. President for this time. I want to also take this moment to acknowledge, some of you might be familiar with Pastor Steele, W.J. Steele, in the Cornhill area, pastor of the beautiful church on Eagle Street, I think it's Eagle and West, and you might remember a while back.
A participant has left the meeting.
And she built a new church on Eagle Street. Well, Pastor Steele's mother, Mrs. Betsy Bowen, passed away last week due to COVID-19. She was in her eighties and passed away, and so I just wanted to acknowledge her, a woman that has contributed a lot to this community and to so many people in the African-American community in Cornhill and all over the city. So I wanted to take this moment to acknowledge her. As far as other business for the council, I just want us all to keep in mind those affected by COVID, and I hope that this council in the future, we can follow the example of our county executive and our mayor, and acknowledge the emergency workers, those in our healthcare field, essential workers all over the city, and I look forward to working with members of the council to see if we can put some resolution together as a full council to kind of echo the sentiments of our other elected officials to get that passed. That's all, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Councilman Beatrice, you have the floor.
The council has been getting a lot, been reading and hearing things about the council overturn, overturning referendums. So I just want, I just was thinking about some stuff, like the only referendum that was overturned was the term limits, which was by the former council, which I thought was a terrible, terrible decision in my opinion. When we come to the paving plan, okay, we, we did not overturn the paving plan. We moved it for one year because we're in the middle of a pandemic, and we had no idea what stands ahead of us financially for the city. Lastly, the term limits last week, okay?
I don't believe the term limits, yeah.
I'm sorry, the rest, I'm sorry, the residency last week, again, we did not overturn that. We modified that, okay? I mean, we went from a lifetime ban to five years for fiscal reasons, and for us to be able to staff our department with proper numbers and the most qualified officers. And I just want to make that clear, you know, since like Councilwoman Celeste said, you know, there's a lot of people listening, and I want them to really know that, because that's a big difference in those two things. Then, you know, nobody took away from what the people wanted. You know, we're out here to do, you know, we have to make decisions sometimes without waiting eight or nine months to go, you know, back to a vote. And that's all, that's all I wanted to say. I just, I just want to make that clear. So thank you very much, Mr. President. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Councilman and minority leader, Mark Williamson, you have the floor.
Mr. President, I have nothing to pass today.
Then, you know, nobody took away from what the people wanted. You know, we're out here to do, you know, we have to make decisions sometimes without waiting eight or nine months to go, you know, back to a vote. And that's all I wanted to say. I just want to make that clear. So thank you very much, Mr. President. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Councilman and minority leader, Mark Williamson, you have the floor.
Mr. President, I have nothing to pass today.
Who? Councilman Lomarico? What's, Councilman Lomarico, you have the floor. Councilman Lomarico, I believe he's muted again somehow. Let's see here. You're unmuted, Councilman Lomarico.
Can you hear me?
Now we can, yes. You have the floor.
Okay, thank you. First of all, I'd like to wish, this is like the third time I've said this, but first of all, I'd like to wish everybody up and coming happy Memorial Day. Please be safe. Remember that the COVID virus is still out there, and we need to keep our personal distances. God forbid we bring it home to an elder, and that's everybody's worst nightmare. Second of all, when it came to term limits, when Joe, Councilman Beatrice was talking, we didn't get rid of term limits, first of all. It was very similar to what we did to the paving. All we did was add, we added one more term to the term limits. We never got rid of term limits. So I appreciate them not liking what we did, but what we did on the roads is pretty much the same thing we did on that as well. We just changed it. That being said, I'd like to, once again, thank you all for listening today, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Councilman Frank DeBrango, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank the tow truck drivers. We had a meeting earlier at 5:15 PM regarding tow truck legislation, and it was a great participation, got a lot of feedback. I think we all worked together on it, and I'm sure that we can come up with a proper solution to amend the legislation that's out there. And I want to make one recommendation. I'm going to recommend that Jack Lomarico get remedial training on how to use Cisco Webex meetings. He just, he has a little problem with his mute button, so I think President.
No, I don't know why. It said it was unmuted.
Gleme could help you. All right, that is all, Mr. President. Everybody have a great Memorial Day weekend. I know it stopped, probably can't get together with the family too much, but do the best you can, and always remember our soldiers out there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Council President Gleme, I will reflect the same on Memorial Day. Please remember those that we are celebrating, if you will, on that day. It's not just a day to hang out and party, but we are memorializing people for a reason. Keep that in our minds. Is there any other business this evening from the floor? I'd like to call for a motion to adjourn.
Well, if my speaker, if my mic is working, I'll second it.
Okay, well, I can make the motion. So do you want to make the motion?
I'll make that motion. Thank you.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is anyone opposed? Everyone have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you.